Page County's zoning Board of Appeals were here this evening to consider, well, to conduct our meeting, which begins with indicating that there are no minutes to be approved, no public comment to be offered, other than comment that might be raised in connection with the public hearing that we will hold. And now I will call the first item on the first substantive item on the agenda, which is the public hearing. This is zoning petition 25040, the county of DuPage Department of Transportation. We have a request for special use for the construction of the new 178,000 square foot highway maintenance facility, including the equipment garage, support spaces and DOT offices. Site development also includes construction of the new yard for DOT operations, including a new salt storage building, vehicle wash building and fueling island. Additional improvements will be made to the surrounding areas, including new elevator at the current 509 county park deck with covered walkway, a new prefabricated cold storage building and a new public bathroom building, both to be utilized by fairgrounds. Property is located in the county of DuPage on an 84 acre site serviced by water and sewer. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on August 5th, 2025. And we have received no objections or comments from the various authorities to whom we circulate the petition. I have a number of exhibits which I will perhaps wait to be introduced by the presenter of the petition. Having read that zoning request, I can imagine that there's a lot more to say, but in the event that we have testimony to be given this evening, who is presenting on behalf of the county?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my name is Assistant State Attorney Nick Alfonso A. L. O. N. S. L. I'm here representing the DuPage Division of Transportation. We have a number of witnesses present today, three of which will give testimony affirmatively. That is, Stephen Travia, the director, will provide an introduction and a little background on the project. Jason Estes, the county's consultant from FGM Architects, will provide detailed information about the product project and how it complies with the City of Wheaton's zoning ordinance. And Elizabeth Cerny from FGM Architects as well. We also have Tim Harbaugh, the Director of the DuPage Facilities Management Department here. Mike Figuera, the Manager of Highway Operations for the Division of Transportation. Nick Kotmeyer, the county's Chief Administrative Officer, may be in attendance. And finally, Mark Thomas from the county as well. Prior to the beginning of today's hearing, I asked your court reporter, and I want to make sure it was okay with you. We'd ask that these witnesses be sworn in as a group, save time.
That's what we customarily do. In fact, and I don't know who the rest of you folks are, but to the extent that any of you will answer questions or comment about the pros and cons of this petition, would you all, all who wish to testify, please stand and be sworn in by our court reporter.
Could you raise your right hands, please? You do sound like you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give at this clause now, hearing be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, excellent. Thank you very much. And each of you can identify yourselves as you begin your testimony. Mr. Alfonso, what would you do, what would you like to do about exhibits? You can introduce them now, one by one, and I'll admit them without any objection. And or you can introduce them during the course of your presentation.
I'll introduce them now, that way that's out of the way. So the first exhibit, Exhibit One, is the October 22nd, 2024 IGA by and between the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton. This is the basis for why the committee is hearing this, or pardon, the Board of Appeals is hearing this pursuant to the City of Wheaton's ordinance. This second exhibit is the plan of survey for the project. The third exhibit is the site plan for the project. The fourth exhibit is the traffic study, which will be explored in more detail by Mr. Estes. The fifth exhibit is the City of Wheaton and the county of DuPage special condition outline in response that's provided by the consultant. The sixth exhibit is a memorandum from my office.
Just, I'm sorry, what's five again?
That is the City of Wheaton and County of DuPage special conditions. Basically, it outlines the special conditions requirements from the City of Wheaton, as well as the DuPage County's ordinance and the response to those on behalf of the petitioner. The sixth exhibit is a memorandum from the State's Attorney's Office, specifically authored by me, which outlines how this proposed development complies with the Supreme Court's decision in City of Chicago Heights versus Living Word Outreach Full Gosman Church. And the last exhibit is the presentation or slide deck that you'll be seeing today. And I believe you should all have a copy of that in front of you as well.
Excellent. I'm very interested in the six, by the way. May be instructive as to this matter and others.
I hope so. And then with that, we'd ask that those exhibits be admitted.
They are so admitted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephen Travia, the Director of the DuPage Division of Transportation.
Good evening. As mentioned, I'm Steve Travia. I'm the Director of the DuPage County Division of Transportation. And I'm here with the team to discuss the construction of a new DuPage County Highway Maintenance Facility. Before I get into specifics, I want to mention a couple of things. As you may be aware, and as was mentioned in council's opening, the county entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Wheaton relative to the county campus, which has been tendered as Exhibit One. The entire eastern portion of the county campus remains in the incorporated area of Wheaton. But through the IGA, the county has been given authority relative to zoning and building permitting matters on the county campus, including the requirement that the DuPage County Zoning Board of Appeals conduct a public hearing regarding any development, which requires zoning relief on this campus, with final disposition of zoning matters to be approved by the Wheaton City Council. Tonight, we'll discuss the county's need for a new transportation facility, which is considered a special use per the new City of Wheaton County Administrative Campus Zoning District that the city and the county developed and agreed upon as part of the IGA. Having said that.
Or read that.
Yes, or read that. Yes, thank you for bearing with me. So I'm here with the members of our team, which includes county staff and FGM Architects. And we want to present information on the proposed construction of the new DOT Highway Maintenance Facility. Proposed facility will sit on the far northern portion of the existing county fairgrounds property adjacent to the Union Pacific Railroad. The DOT's existing maintenance facility on the west campus at 140 North County Farm Road is located about half a mile from the new proposed site. The existing 140 building was built in 1957, is nearly 70 years old and is beyond its useful life. It no longer meets the needs of the county DOT and needs to be replaced so that the county can continue to fulfill its requirement of operating and maintaining the county highway network. The existing building sits tightly in the southwest corner of the county's west campus. It's currently about 58,000 square feet, houses vehicle storage and our operation staff. Over the last several decades, the needs of maintaining the county roadways have become increasingly technically complex, requiring more and larger equipment to respond to the also growing needs of the second largest county in the state of Illinois. The existing building footprint is over two and a half times too small for our current and future operations. In addition to being too small, the existing facility's systems, HVAC and roof are all either outdated, inefficient and/or failing. Replacement of the facility is the appropriate approach. As the existing site west of County Farm Road is too small for the appropriately sized new facility, another site was selected with the preference to be centrally located in DuPage County and have direct access to a county highway. So we're excited to present the proposed facility that will enhance our ability to deliver these required highway services to the people of DuPage County. The new facility is going to maximize under roof storage, including needed de-icing materials, improve site flow and circulation for efficiency and safety, upgrade all of the electrical, mechanical and plumbing to current standards, making them more efficient, and maintain continuous operations throughout construction, especially during snow and ice season. When the project is complete, our operations will be safer, more efficient, mitigate our existing and future environmental impacts, and do so without sacrificing a level of service that our public requires. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to FGM Architects to actually give you some actual detail about that and talk more about the proposed facility. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Can I, may I just say, your testimony was instructive and valuable. Generally speaking, if a homeowner comes in and says to us, I need some zoning relief because I want to build in addition to my house, we give great deference to the need that the petitioner indicates. We don't judge whether, you know, yeah, he's had two extra kids and needs an addition or a new bedroom. So your testimony is instructive, but I am inclined to give great deference to you as indicating the need for this new facility, as we do in the ordinary course. Next.
Good evening. My name is Jason Estes. I am a principal with FGM Architects. As stated, working on this project. It's my pleasure to be able to present to you information today, in our case, as we go through. Little unique that I'm working off of a slide deck, a little different than what I would normally be doing, but I'm going to try to keep you going along as we go through. So bear with us. Exhibit seven is, is our example of our slide deck. And in the bottom right are the page numbers, so that way we can make sure that everybody is following. Before I begin, Director Travia said a lot of information. I wanted to add a little bit more to be able to understand the need of this project and the impact of this project. DuPage DOT is responsible for over 220 miles of centerline roadway, 92 miles of trail, and is responsible for 940,000 residents. This includes pavement, bridge repair, traffic signs, signals, snow and ice operations and general maintenance. For context, the amount of roadway actually equates to to 1,024 plowable lane miles of roadway. That's more than the distance from here to Denver, Colorado, which is completed by 30 to 35 trucks on a plow shift. And then consider that each section of that road is touched multiple times during an event. This is a vital service for the safety of the county's residents that cannot be interrupted, as Director Travia stated. So the other part that I want to be able to explain is that this is not a new operation, but rather shifting operation on the campus, the county campus, to a single consolidated efficient operation under a same, under a roof. So literally shifting from the west side of County Farm to the east side of County Farm. If you look at page two in your deck, a little information in terms of the existing facility, as Director Travia stated, built in 57. The existing facilities have been outdated. If you go to page three, gives you context on what is the current site. So the current site of the DOT facility accounts for 8.5 acres. It includes the highway garage and fleet maintenance. It does have fuel station within that area, salt domes, and then parking and equipment storage. If you go to page four, this shows you the relationship that Director Travia was talking about from the existing DOT facility in the west side of County Farm in the blue highlighted area. And the highlighted yellow area is the proposed location at the northeast corner of the campus camp, or county campus, which is about half a mile away. Slide five. So the new site is located in the northeast corner of the county campus. To the north is the Union Pacific West. It's commuter and freight line. So per Federal Railroad Administration reports, that's 98 trains per day. Includes 54 daytime trains, 40 night trains, four switching trains. And of those daily trains, 52 are passenger trains, Monday through Friday. The existing 509 five-story parking garage located immediately to the west of the proposed location serves the count, the campus currently, the courthouse and the fairgrounds area currently. South of the fairgrounds is the county campus, which has improved, improvements being included under this project. Also, south is the county campus detention pond, which was recently expanded upon with stormwater valves. East is a gravel area serving overflow parking for the fairgrounds, parking for adjacent school sports games and snow storage for the city of Wheaton. The site currently is depressed at a lower elevation than than the existing adjacent areas. And the new location, as I stated, is about a half mile from the current DOT facility. If you go to page six, we're going to jump into the special use requirements right away. This is a little unique in that we are addressing not only the city of Wheaton's because of the IGA, again, Exhibit One as presented, but we are also addressing the county requirements as well. So actually, between page six and seven, we are going to go through each of these items and address them one by one to make sure that we're on record accord. But I do want to note that the project as presented would meet all county of DuPage and city of Wheaton Building Code and Ordinance requirements and that we are not meeting any variance or not seeking any variances through this process. So what on page six, as stated, are the city of Wheaton application standards for a special use permit? I'm just going to, I'm going to go through each line item and address each as we see it. So number one, the establishment, maintenance of operation and special use shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety morals, comfort, convenience and general welfare. So the establishment, maintenance and operation of the building will remain in accordance with the existing use of the county campus. The new highway maintenance facility, which we're calling this facility, will house the DuPage County Division of Transportation, Operations and Administration Departments, and will not endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare. The new facility will relocate staff on the county campus to a single location. This staff consists of the following. So 30 staff of administration that is currently located at 421 will be shifted to this new facility. In addition, you'll have 66 maintenance staff and operations from the current 140 campus building. This staff is in shifted operations currently occurring between 6:00 and 2:30 P. 6:00 AM and 2:30 PM. Operations have the following vehicles in operation during normal operations, which is 46 plow trucks, 75 light medium vehicles, 92 pieces of construction equipment and 27 trailers, all to service all of those needs that I stated earlier in my presentation. The new project consists of the main building that houses the equipment and operations storage, staff operations and equipment storage, and division administration and training. As noted, there's an above-ground diesel fueling depot solely serving the DOT equipment, a dedicated wash building solely serving the DOT equipment, an under-roof salt operations facility for storage and loading of snow and ice operations and miscellaneous equipment storage bins for maintenance supporting DOT's mission. Operations in the yard and outbuildings occur during typical shifted hours of 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with the exception of emergency operations, which would include snow and ice operations and are event-based. The above-ground fueling depot would meet all applicable standards, including Illinois State Fire Marshal, 430 ILCS, Gasoline Storage Act, 225 ILCS, 729 Petroleum Contractors, 41 Illinois Administrative Code Parts 172, 174, 175 and 176. It is solely used for DOT operations, as I stated earlier. The wash bay would meet all applicable standards, including Illinois Plumbing Code, International Building Code, International Mechanical Code and the International Energy Conservation Code. It is solely used for DOT operations. All operations would meet the applicable noise ordinance for the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton. Number two, the special use shall not be injurious injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property to the immediate vicinity of the purposes already permitted, not substantially diminish property values within the neighborhood. It is not anticipated that the new facility will be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity. The new facility will be secured by a concrete screen walls and eight-foot tall fencing so that the public will not have visual or physical access to the site or equipment. A new 12-foot wide pedestrian pathway will be installed along the north fence line of the HMF to allow the public to safely pass from the 509 parking deck to the athletic fields located east of the HMF site without needing to gain entry to the secure HMF yard space. As part of the project, two new buildings and landscape screening will be included to the fairgrounds operations, providing much-needed public restrooms for all visitors. The landscape screening will be located across at the long Manchester Road to help mitigate sound transmission from the county fairgrounds area to the residence south of Manchester Road. It is, it is not anticipated to substantially diminish property values within the neighborhood. The new facility is a governmental operation adjacent to other governmental operations on the county campus. The HMF site is surrounded by DuPage County campus on the east, south and west sides and the Union Pacific West train tracks to the north. The project will remove structures that are no longer in operation on the county fairgrounds area and replace those with the new facilities that I stated in green space to offset the original use. All operations will meet the applicable noise ordinances, setback requirements and lighting and photometric requirements for the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton. As stated, the site is currently depressed at a lower elevation than the existing adjacent parcels, creating a natural elevation barrier for noise to the adjacent properties. The project shall be designed utilizing dark sky lighting initiatives to, to available extent for safety to further minimize adjacent impacts. Number three, the establishment of special use shall not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use as already permitted. It is not anticipated that the new HMF facility will impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. The proposed project is a new county facility that will be located on the existing DuPage County campus, which has been developed and designated for such use per the intergovernmental agreement, Exhibit One, between the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton. The property has been zoned and classified as DuPage County Governmental Center District and the new facility is a governmental operation adjacent to other governmental operations on the county campus. Number four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage and other necessary facilities shall be permit, or shall be provided. The new utilities will be provided to the bill, all buildings within the development and the existing Wheaton sanitary, district sanitary sewer line will be capped and rerouted as to avoid conflict with the location of the new HMF building. And the sanitary line will remain in operation and not disrupt services during the relocation. Stormwater detention has been provided in the recently expanded campus pond and no additional stormwater detention design or construction shall be required. Stormwater for the county campus never leaves the county property and all stormwater requirements will meet the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton stormwater ordinances. The existing North Ring Road will be improved and expanded to provide access to the HMF facility at the north of the county campus, as this will be the primary access for all DOT fleet and equipment. Alternate access to the site will utilize an existing, the existing central campus ring road south of the parking deck 509 and will provide signalized access at the south traffic signal at County Farm Road. Number five, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress designed to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. A traffic was study, a traffic study was conducted by T Y Lynn and is included as Exhibit Four as presented. The study concluded that the area roadway network would generally provide adequate vehicular capacity after the addition of the background traffic and completed, in completion of the proposed HMF project. Additionally, all employees for the DOT will be instructed to access the HMF facility exclusively via County Farm Roads intersection with north and east entrances, entrance. It is important to understand that this project is not a new operation, as I stated previously, but shifting operations on the campus to a single consolidated efficient operation under a roof. Operation staff will shift from the east side of County Farm Road and access at the, with access at the south ring road traffic signal to the proposed site now accessing the north ring road traffic signal. Administration staff shall shift from the 421 administration building to the proposed site and now utilize the existing parking deck 509 instead of the 421 facility. And all traffic for this site will be directed to the ring road and County Farm Road traffic signals. The HMF yard shall have southern emergency access with a Knox box for emergent, for access for emergency vehicular traffic and emergency event circumstances. During these events, access would still be covered utilizing the county's, county campus ring road central access.
What, what's a Knox box?
Knox box is a box that is accessed by emergency services. They have a universal key that would allow them to gain access at any time during an emergency.
Thank you.
Number six, a special use shall comply, the special use shall comply with the objective, objectives of the Wheaton Comprehensive Plan. Per the intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton, Exhibit One, property has been zoned and classified as DuPage County Governmental Central District. The use of this site for transportation and public works facilities falls within the appropriate agreed-upon use for the east side of the county campus per the city of Wheaton's comprehensive plan. And number seven, the special use shall conform to the applicable requirements of the district in which it is located, well as any other applicable requirements of this ordinance, except as it may be varied by the board or city council. Per attachment two of the IGA, Exhibit One, between the county of DuPage and the city of Wheaton, this clarifies that the DuPage County Governmental Center District Sector provides a centralized location for county public services, including but not limited to transportation, public works, animal services, social services, care center and emergency management. The new HMF facility will qualify as a transportation and public works facility, which is allowed as special use. That addresses the city of Wheaton's requirements. If you turn to page seven in the slide deck, this is the county's special use requirements. So to, we're going to, going to address these again. So item A, the requirements for the county state that it will not impair or impair or adequate supply of light or an air to the adjacent property. The new facility has been located to avoid casting shadows on any nearby occupied building. The closest building is the 509 parking deck located approximately 70 feet west of the new facility with a wetland buffer between the two structures. The remaining outbuildings are one-story buildings generally spaced throughout the site and will not impair the light and air supplies to adjacent properties. Item B, it will not increase the hazard from fire or other dangers to said property. The new facility and all structures will be built in accordance with 2024 International Building Codes as adopted by the city of Wheaton. All applicable codes and amendments will be followed. Per the IGA Exhibit One, show, the county shall perform all required inspections of any work and the county's building officials shall independently certify that the work was performed in compliance with the building plans and the International Building Code. The county's findings of the complete permitting process will be sent to the city of Wheaton for secondary review and comment, as well as for record, which follows the Exhibit One requirements. The building occupancies are anticipated to be business, storage and utility. The facility will have a complete code-compliant fire suppression and fire alarm system for the building use and classification. Item C, it will not diminish the value of land and buildings in the vicinity of the proposed conditional use. The new facility is not anticipated to diminish the value of land and buildings within the vicinity of the proposed special use. The facility is surrounded by DuPage County on the east, south and west and the Union Pacific West trains on the train tracks on the north. Additionally, the HMF building has been located towards the southern edge of the developed site to, in order to minimize its presence at the north. The HMF facility is a governmental facility adjacent to other governmental facilities on the county campus. A new consolidated efficient governmental facility on a governmental campus will support the residence transportation needs. Item D, will not unduly increase traffic congestion in the public streets and highways. This is similar to the city of Wheaton's item number five, which I addressed previously. Item E, it will not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent properties. Again, this is, item is very similar to the city of Wheaton's item number four, which we addressed previously. Item F, it will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue or Item F, it will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue or relief. The new facility and its outbuildings are not anticipated to be hazardous use. And shall not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue or relief beyond. Above and beyond the requirements of a typical county building. The facility will have a new, will have a new code compliant fire suppression and fire alarm system, which should diminish the likelihood for fire service response. The facility is also as stated a replacement for the current D O T one forty county campus. So there's no additional need or service requirement. It's a change of facility. The fire protection systems will meet the applicable county of DuPage and city of Wheaton's building codes. The above ground fueling depot will meet all applicable standards. Uh, as I stated in the previous response onto the city of Wheaton, uh, for the applicable codes and solely used for D O T operations. Item G, it will not otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals. Or general wealth, welfare of the inhabitants of DuPage County, nor will it otherwise create a nuisance. This is similar to the city of Wheaton's item number one, which I responded to previously.
Before you go on, may I ask, uh, council, are we, obviously we will make findings concerning the seven standards from the DuPage County ordinance. Are, are we expected or will we be requested to make findings concerning the city of Wheaton standards?
I believe so, yes.
Those findings will be reviewed by the city of Wheaton City Council. So they'll come to the final determination on that at the end of the day.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
Want to give that some thought. I don't have a lot of experience making findings with respect to the Wheaton standards, but we'll resolve that. Thanks.
I was just about to enter that, a little bit of conversation. So, no, you're perfect. Um, so what, what, the reason I had to read off all of those is per the I G A is the requirement is to make sure that we meet all requirements. Um, so. The county of DuPage can conduct the zoning hearings on behalf of the city of Wheaton. Per the I G A exhibit one. Upon completion of the finalized zoning process, the county of DuPage will forward its findings and recommendations to the city of Wheaton. To where the city of Wheaton shall have the final vote on approval and acceptance of the process. That's the interpretation. Obviously legal will give more input as necessary. The last piece that I wanted to be able to state before we go over a little bit of the project itself is that. The project will meet all applicable county of DuPage and city of Wheaton building codes and ordinance requirements. The project will meet all applicable zoning ordinances and, and is not seeking a variance through this process. So, uh, at this point, I want to be able to kind of walk you through the project because I told you a lot of information. Um, so on page eight, you'll see the existing facility as it's, or the existing grounds as it stands. This is our demolition site plan. You can see the existing stables on the county facility. Those are some of the buildings. That we are talking about as well as the existing grandstands, uh, that would be removed from the county, uh, fairgrounds area. Uh, that have been not used of recent. Uh, the red is the limits of the D O T facility that we're talking about. And the yellow is currently a parking, uh, parking area that will be continued to be used. By all campus facilities. If you turn to page nine, you'll see our proposed site plan. The D O T facility as it's shown is a hundred and eighty one thousand, six hundred and seventy five square feet. Uh, you'll see the entrance, uh, for all fleet facility or fleet operations will be upon that North Ring Road extension. Uh, that we will be entering. You can see the new fuel island at the north as well as the new wash building to the north. We're using that as a nice buffer to the north to help mitigate sound, uh, another chance to mitigate sounds to neighbors. Uh, the salt building shown at forty thousand square foot along the east side is all under roof. So that is all, all salt storage as well as loading. Uh, all, all trucks will be entering the facility and loaded within the facility. As stated, uh, the entire yard space is surrounded and secured. The blue line as shown is a concrete retaining wall and the red. Uh, line as shown is an eight foot opaque perimeter fencing, uh, to minimize visual impact. Page ten will show you the first floor plan of the facility. The lion's share of the facility is storage, uh, for vehicles. Uh, with the cost of vehicles nowadays, you can see how much, uh, how much, uh, vehicles inside. It prolongs the life of the vehicles and that is the bulk of that first facility, first ground layout. Also included on the first ground in the, in the purple is actually a training room that allows all staff or D O T to be within a single training operation. Training requirements are very important to maintain. And then operational function. So the light blue, the other teal areas. Uh, and the baby blue areas are operational functions that service their operations. If you turn to page eleven, this is the second floor. This is the administration operations that is moving from four twenty one. It is mainly over the front area, the southern operations of this facility. The garage itself is a two, a two story height wise because of the type of equipments that were stored. If you turn to page twelve, you'll get a good representation of what the outside of this, this is, uh, looking from the southeast perspective. The majority of the facility, the garage is precast. Uh, as you see, but the office area, we are trying to get as much natural light in as possible to the occupants.
This is a little bit beyond our scope, but, uh. They have some significance, uh, that is escaping me.
Okay.
So, you know, we can go fast through if, if it's easier.
Uh, page thirteen is another, uh, perspective. And page fourteen shows the part of the existing five oh nine parking deck. We are providing a new elevator for convenience. Uh, with staff parking in the five oh nine, we want to be able to make sure that it's, it's obviously accessible and, and, uh. Reasonable for them to be able to gain access to their own facility. Fifteen is the front elevation. Sixteen is the rear of the facility. In this one, you see in the far left, uh, the wash bay. You see the fueling depot. And then on the right, you see the brine operation, which will end up on the north side of the D O T facility. Which handles with salt operations. From there, if you were to go to page nineteen. This gives you a context of the salt operation. This is the, uh, everything is in board. You can see in the bottom right, salt, storage and operations. If you go to page twenty, this is the wash building. This will allow them to be able to go to run their entire fleet through in a shift. Which again, the amount of salt and damage to vehicles is important. So this is all enclosed, all washing operations and drying operations occur within this facility. Page twenty one is the depot, fueling depot. It's going to have twenty thousand gallon double walled fuel tank located above ground near the wash building. Automated control systems, deaf, uh, stations for diesel and roof canopy over the island. Page twenty two just gives you a little closer opera, uh, picture of where the fuel, uh, above ground fueling, um, tanks are. Adjacent south of the, uh, wash facility. In the yard space. And the other two components that we had said was improvements to the fairgrounds area since we are taking some facilities out. Uh, that are unused. Uh, so page twenty three is a new public restroom building. That'll be open year round. So it will be heated and cooled. Twenty four will give you a rendering of kind of what the outside of that will be. And to offset the storage that they, that the fairgrounds association has in the. Base of the grandstands, we're providing them a larger, uh, a larger cold storage building, five thousand square foot on the campus site. That is a quick rendering on twenty six. With that. I'm going to turn it back over to the state's attorney. They're going to speak on exhibit six a little bit on that living word standard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, before we, if anybody has any questions, ready to listen. I want to make sure.
We'll probably go with questions at the, um. Some of these guys spill all over.
So, I'm not going to read you the entire memorandum. You can review that at your leisure. So in a nutshell, the living word standard. Is whether the facts and circumstances that have been demonstrated here today show that particular use that we've proposed. At the particular relation, location that we've proposed it at. Would have adverse effects above and beyond those inherently associated with the special use. And if it were placed in some other area. Right? So it's a comparative analysis. Based on the exhibits and testimony that we've seen today. There are no facts and circumstances that show that D O T's proposed use would have any adverse effects within the DuPage County Government Center zoning district. And certainly we haven't seen any adverse effects. Comparatively between what it'll be at the district and what it would be if we were to put it somewhere else. And that is the living word sta, standard. So the proposed development, as we've heard, satisfies every standard for conditional and special uses under the DuPage County. Building code and zoning code. Every standard for special uses under the city of Wheaton zoning ordinance. The standard of review for the Illinois Supreme Court living word as well as, um. No, based on these facts, we ask that you grant the special use.
Does that conclude your presentation?
If there's anything else, yes.
Great. Let me just. Let's talk about your traffic study for just a moment. Um, there's a lot here to digest. But like all traffic studies. This one says, there ain't no problem. Also, all traffic studies model the proposed use against some common. Similar use that is. Sort of a standard. Like restaurants are modeled against restaurants, et cetera. What is my, what, what modeling is done here? Because this is a real unique building.
And turn that over to Jason. It is unique, uh, but as stated, we are literally shifting operations from one side of the county to the other. So we were able to take information. From their operations as it stands today and move it over in part of the.
Oh, so you didn't model against some, some generalized standard. You studied. The proposed use against the existing.
How it was shifting around on campus. As well as all of the intersection points that were dealing with the county ring road and access points.
Okay, and just in. Sort of conclusory. Terms. There will be no intrusion of light or noise to the neighbors across the street. And you seek no relief concerning those common standards.
That's correct.
Well, that's a huge issue. Typically a condition that we propose. Is landscaping. Can you just tell me? Or, or repeat a little bit about what landscaping is proposed. At the perimeter of your property.
So, uh, to the north of the property is, to the north of the property, there is.
Wait, well, but you're not on the, no.
We are, we are located at the northeast corner of the property.
Okay.
So between us and I'm assuming what you stated as the road is Manchester.
Yeah.
So between us and Manchester, there is still fairgrounds operations as they stand today.
Okay. And those unsightly grandstands are going away.
The grandstands are going away. We have, uh. We have proposed, and that was part of what we were talking about, along Manchester improvements. Um, to help mitigate some operational changes, uh, potentially on the fairgrounds, uh, locate, uh, the area.
Okay.
That, that includes firms and landscape. That would basically be offsetting the parking areas that exist today.
I'm trying to sort of make comparisons to be as fair as possible. And not give any special deference to the county. Compared to, uh, a, a typical, uh, case that would come before us. And when somebody says, I'm going to take down this shed in order to build this garage. We. Impose a condition that the shed be removed. That seems problematic to me in this case because. Although you propose the, uh. As I understand it, the elimination of the current D O T. Buildings on what's shown as the existing D O T location. I, I don't imagine that you propose that that space be vacant.
That's correct. Um, as of right now, I, I do not believe the county has specific plans for that.
Right, so, uh, uh, if I may, so the, right now the county is undertaking a master plan of the west campus. And, uh, there are proposed uses for the existing, uh, facility, maybe not as a D O T garage, but perhaps as storage for other types of.
You're not going to raise the building, you're going to discontinue the current use.
The master plan will determine its ultimate longevity, uh, but in the immediate term, uh, it has additional, uh, uh. Functionality as cold storage, if you will.
So the comparison of, uh, you got to take down your shed in order to build a garage is an inappropriate comparison.
I think in this, in this instance, yes.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Does any other member of the board have a, have a question? All right, I don't see any, uh.
I do have a quick question. So there's a wetland to the west of this that you'd mentioned and stuff. Is there any special protection to ensure that since you're adding. Hardscape. Adjacent to it, is there any protection for that area?
That whole area is going to be improved. A lot of the wetlands that occur on that area right now, uh, are. For, uh, for quality, uh, landscape elements, uh, trees, plants, scrub brush that is. That is actually not ideal for a wetlands, uh, area. So part of this will be improving those areas and maintaining those, uh, as part of the construction. Uh, so limitations will be held back. Uh, we've actually engaged, uh, some consultants, V three who worked on the storm waters. And I will pass it to Tim to give additional comment.
My name is Tim Harboy, director of facilities for DuPage County. Um, that area, we will comply with both the city Wheaton and the DuPage County ordinance. We don't have a final design on that, but right now I anticipate that we will, we will maintain fifty foot buffer. Uh, the nuisance vegetation, the buckthorn and other things will be removed and we will be. Adding proper vegetation in there that is native that will enhance that area. That area does feed into the stormwater basin that was mentioned earlier. That entire stormwater basin was made into a wetland, uh, in twenty twenty two. When we expanded, we went from a wet bottom basin to a well and basin. So we are, we will be improving the water quality and maintaining that. There's also potentially maybe some wetland impacts on the northern portion of property as well. Similar that would fall similarly to the area between the five oh nine parking deck and the area that's going to be impacted.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. We're doing a hardscape. Thing and improving our wetlands at the same time. Great, thanks. We, uh. Pay a lot of attention to your wetland issues here because of.
I understand. Thank you for that.
We don't know much about it, but we try. Some of us do actually. All right, uh, any other questions from any members of the board? And, uh, I, I'm not sure what your, uh, uh, role here is, folks. If you're here to answer questions. Um, we haven't asked any other than the, uh, this gentleman. Um, if you want to offer additional testimony, uh, as part of the petition. I presume Mr. Alfonso would have.
That's correct. They're here to, if a member of the public has a question, they're here.
Great, thank you very much. Then I'll take, uh, comments or questions from members of the audience and I have three. Members of the audience. Do I, any of you wish to make? Comments or ask questions? And if so, please raise your hand. One hand, two hands, three hands, three out of three. Oh, I'm sorry. You're sitting in the wrong world. I thought you were with the team. All right, would you all raise your hand and be sworn in, please?
Would you raise your right hand, please? You just solemnly swear, you just solemnly swear from the testimony you're about to give, that this cause and out hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay, when you speak, you'll only be given one opportunity to speak, so I can't have a dialogue and continue to go back and forth. And our rules generally provide that you have three minutes to speak. I'll be a little bit liberal with that, depending on actually where you live and how close you are and how affected you are by this project. And when you begin your testimony, please spell, state your name, spell your last name for the record, and tell us your address. And then, if you can, you can tell us, "I support the petition, I oppose the petition", and then three minutes starts when you get to tell us why. All right, so who would like to go first?
Do you want me to go first?
You can just, oh.
Okay. My name is Karen Spandiko, S.P.A.N.D.I.K.O.W. I'm part of the Park and Recreation Community, so my big goal is green space. I live at, what was that?
Do you live in this neighborhood?
Yes, I live at 119 South Hazelton Avenue. I'm on the south side of the property, so just south of Manchester Road. So, and just like we're Hazelton Avenue, so we're the property that basically goes right into their parking lot. We utilize the space, we appreciate the green space, we appreciate all the county improvements that have been done. I'm, I look forward, I respect UGM a lot, and look forward to seeing improvements at the property. I guess my, our big concern, number one, is green space being taken away and being replaced. So, how much green space are we removing versus how much we're replenishing? I see that they're turning this whole parking lot into green space. So, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of questioning, is that actually not going to be a parking lot anymore, adjacent to that pond, the retention pond, the new whole retention pond?
Could you jot these questions down and then answer them all at the same time?
Sure.
Number two is, we talked about traffic, and you kept talking about them coming in through the north light. I'm assuming they won't access through Manchester Road. That was another concern or question. And number three, is the existing site going to be reused as part of the green space we're getting rid of? Which kind of goes to question one. And then, you've discussed light pollution from the north, I think north of the tracks, but we discussed it from the south, like from our end. Yeah.
By existing site, you mean the current building that we talked about just a little bit ago?
Yes, the, the property to the west. You talked about proposals for repurposing it, but it sounded like we were going to leave it and keep using it for storage for the county, which, is it going to be repurposed back?
I think they said they haven't finalized that plan.
Right, right, right. Right. But just, you know, the concern as a resident is.
Great. We won't answer your questions now because there may be similar questions asked by other speakers, so we'll have a comprehensive answer at the end, okay?
Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
Let me go next. Scott Bruno, I live with this beautiful gal right here, 119 South Hazelton.
Can you spell your last?
You're under oath.
Bruno B. and Victor.
You're under oath.
But I live.
Were you, were you guys sworn in?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was sworn in. I've worked, Scott Bruno, 119 South Hazelton Avenue. I've worked for the federal government for 25 years through the current administration. Things went on, so I'm retired right now. I worked as a fish biologist, and I guess one of the questions I've had is what kind of scoping has been done for this project? As a federal employee, anything we do on the land, we're required to scope.
I don't know what that means.
To scope, to reach out to the public and see if there's any concerns. The scoping I saw for this meeting was two 18-by-24 signs not facing the direction of traffic on Manchester, actually facing the house, and one of the signs didn't even say what it was about or the meeting, rather, it was printed on paper and taped on there. I feel that scoping wasn't, wasn't done, transparency wasn't there for this project. I feel the city of Wheaton might not know, but I, I, I'm looking at your scoping here, and it says you talked to the city of Wheaton, the school district, and whatever else. How about the community around this, this, where this was being built?
All right, I'd like to address that separately, but before the answer, do you have other issues?
I do, yeah, I do have a couple of other issues. Displacement and festival activities. They have activities down here every year, the hammer throwing deal, the victory, the rock, lacrosse, whatever else. Where are those activities? What's that?
Scotland games.
Scotland games. Where are those activities going to occur now? Where's the parking going to occur? The loss of green space, like Karen said. I love the gardens down there, I love the butterfly garden, and I love the bees down there and things like that. All that's going to be removed.
Orchard.
They, they orchard, they train dogs down there as well for the police department. The new, you, you talk about traffic not being a problem, and all the traffic's going to come off County Farm right there. Beverly has turned into a racetrack over there with the recent behaving of that road through the county fairgrounds right there. I imagine the workers are going to come through there, drive down Beverly, not, instead, not going to Roosevelt down County Farm Road. They're going to turn up Beverly and cross there to come through the fairgrounds, park, parking lot right there. That's a concern. As, as someone who walks his dog, and we retired, the traffic has gotten crazy on Beverly right there, and they're going to add additional cars on that. I've almost been hit. I've seen two accidents out front there. Filtration at the wash stations. Are you going to filter the water before it goes to the, to the constructed wetland down there? And what kind of environmental analysis was done? Federal government, when we do any kind of project, we do environmental analysis or EIS. Was any of that conducted? Questions I had, I'm going to chat.
All right, thank you, sir. No, it's not a chat. You asked your question, we'll work out to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do, I wasn't certain whether we would have need for counsel or the board, but Connor is here this evening to represent the board, and I believe the question of scope goes to one of the sort of general questions that we have relating to whether this matter has been properly noticed to the public. That's how I interpret that question. I, I think we know a bit about that, but could you, could you two, can we go off the record for a moment for Mr. Alfonso?
Can you suggest Mr. Alfonso address what he did and that, or what his client did, and then we can.
I was, I was asking that we go off the record for you guys to confer about that point. Are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied that we don't need to.
That you don't need to go off the record?
No.
Tell us what you did to publish, and then you tell us whether it's adequate.
Okay, well, first, I would allow the coming, or the board's attention to the IGA, once again, specifically the Article III of the IGA, which states that as part of the approval process, the county shall conduct the procedures referred to in Section 5.8 of the City of Wheaton zoning ordinance. Now, looking at Section 5.8, notice publication has to be given by the city clerk. Now, no more than 30 nor less than 15 days before the hearing, by publishing a notice thereof at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Wheaton. That has been done. We have an affidavit here from Jessica and Louise Datsman, which attests to the fact that, and the affidavit also has a clipping from the article, that notice was provided via the Daily Herald newspaper on August 4th, and I believe it was published on August 5th, that meets that. Notice was also provided to the adjacent owners in compliance with 5.8B. That portion requires that notice be mailed to anybody within 250 feet that owns property and is a taxpaying citizen. It's based on the tax records. We also have the affidavit of this in police and an affidavit for Mr. Travia, which lays out everybody who the, the notice was sent to, everybody within 300 feet. So, we went beyond the 250 feet required by the ordinance. And because of that, we feel that the notice requirements under the ordinance that are applicable here have been satisfied.
All right, I'm, this is advice of counsel now, so I don't want it on the record, but.
Oh, pardon me. Last but not least, we also did post signs at every single entrance to the county complex. We have photographs of those signs 15 days prior to the hearing.
A little silly procedurally, but let's go off the record so I can confer with our counsel as to whether that seems adequate, please. Based on my understanding of the facts and my, and on advice of counsel, I think we can resolve the, what's been referred to as the scoping question, indicating that publication has been properly done, and we can proceed with this case. Now, let's go back to questions from the audience or comments from the audience, and we'll go for a final answer and conclusory statement from Mr. Alfonso. Sir, would you like to be next?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. I guess I would say that I'm going to be speaking against the project. My name is Rick Barbieri. My address is 822 Arbor Avenue. I do not live in the immediate neighbor, area, neighborhood area, but I've been a resident of Wheaton and a homeowner of Wheaton since 1996. I just noticed the, the advisement that there was a zoning meeting, and it immediately caught my attention as a resident of Wheaton. I think the, what concerns me the most about this project is that it doesn't seem to be integrated, or at least it doesn't appear to me as a resident, to be integrated into an overall county development plan here for this particular area. There was mention of, of a larger future plan for the county complex. You know, when I look at the information that was provided, to me, it appears that, yes, this is, I, I, for lack of a better word, I'm going to say encroaching on the DuPage County Fairgrounds. That encroachment doesn't concern me as much as what is the overall future of the eastern edge of the county campus? Is the, I'm sure the building is needed, and, and so I don't dispute that at all. But is this the highest and best use of the land that's available here? Over the years, as a Wheaton resident, I've seen things that have come up in the paper from time to time regarding the future of the county fairgrounds, other uses of this particular space. It certainly doesn't feel to me as a resident that the possible needs of all of the residents of DuPage County are being considered, not to mention the residents of Wheaton. What is the future of the county campus? Should, should this space over here be considered for other purposes? Obviously, the Department of Transportation has building needs. The DuPage Convalescence Center, I'm sure, has substantial needs for the future, which would also benefit more residents, all of the residents in DuPage County directly, rather than indirectly through garage and maintenance facilities. So, my questions and my comments really have to do with the future of the county campus, and specifically the land to the east here, and is that, again, is that the highest and best use of that land? So, thank you for, for the time. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. And then our final speaker.
Hello, I'm Debbie Hadlik, H.L.A.D.I.L.E.K. I live in 14 South Beverly in Wheaton, so that's a little bit closer to Roosevelt than it is to Manchester Road. But I've been a resident here for 48 and a half years and have seen a lot of development. Target and that used to be a prairie when I first moved in, so all good things, I guess, you know, over the years have, have proceeded. I'm basically in agreement with the, the new structure, facility, and that. But as all previous people have spoken and kind of voiced my concerns, what is going to happen with the eastern portion of the fairgrounds, the buildings over there? Thank you for a new restroom facility. You can always use more restrooms, that's for sure. And just, my questions are just kind of about the berm, I guess, that would be along Manchester Road going into, you know, the northern section of the area. Well, they've mentioned a berm and landscaping and such, so that would be good if you're going to do that. This walkway that goes from the garage or the tracks and then over to the fields and that by Monroe, is that like underneath or through some structure or wall that's over there? Just wondering about that. Then, this green space we talked about, I guess the question was posed, is that going to continue to be a parking lot? Or, or other activities and events that are going on at the fairgrounds, or is it going to be, I don't know, more of a wetland or dry land or something? So, just wondering what's basically going on. Let's see here. Oh, and in terms of events, you know, so will there be that archery competition that goes on? People always like to go to that. And then they meant the Scottish thing was mentioned as well. The, in terms of the sign, and I know we've resolved it already, but the sign that was put up there and mentioned, I mean, the print of the phone number was just, so I had to stop going eastbound. You can't stop going westbound down Manchester because there's no place to park. But I had to stop and look really hard at the sign to read the phone number. So, I'm, you know, I've seen those signs around before, and they're pretty small all the time. So, maybe that could just be a general thing in the future for all events, you know, larger print, anyway. So, that's, just wondering, like I say, you know, the other questions that were mentioned, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the comments and questions from members of the audience, and so we're ready for a final statement by Mr. Alfonso, and you can address answers to whatever questions you choose to, and then make your summary statement.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Chair. Well, first, I'd like to address the questions, and I'd like to ask the witnesses to give me a hand here with them. So, first, Ms. Spandico asked about the parking lot being replaced. Spandico, pardon me. Asked about the parking lot being replaced by green space.
Yeah, so, the, the, the drive aisles, those gravel aisles at the middle of the, yeah, that's going to be recreated as part of the landscaping for the project, and will be turned into open green space in its entirety and preserved that way.
Can I ask clarification?
No, I'm sorry. We can't have a dialogue because I, I want a clean record in this case. Sorry.
The next concern from Spandico was the entry and access off Manchester Road, and whether there's provision being given to that in terms of increased congestion there.
Yeah, I can answer that as well. The, the, all, all of the DOT staff that will use this facility will use the North Ring Road and enter and exit from County Farm Road at the traffic signal in front of the county facility.
Can I expand on that?
Of course.
If you, Exhibit 3 actually shows at the, the southern entrance that was questioned there, an in-ground manual swing gate that is meant to be to curb any, any access going to Manchester, in addition to staff utilizing the ring road. So, that was recognized as a concern, as well as working with fairgrounds function and DOT concern.
The next concern that Ms. Spandico, Spandico conveyed was the future of the existing site.
That was answered during.
Yeah, I believe that was answered already during the testimony. And the last concern was the light pollution. She had noted that it had been addressed from the north, but was looking for addressing that from the south.
And I, I'll, I'll start, and then maybe I'll turn it over to Jason to fill in any details I may miss. So, between the, the berm that's going to be installed along Manchester Road, that will prevent sight and, and sound to a degree. There will be additional fencing and landscaping in the area as well to the south. And the facility itself is already a little bit subterranean, if you will, so it kind of goes a little lower. And it's, so for the most part, the building will be up against the railroad tracks, so it's kind of hidden from view from the north. So it's kind of hidden from view from the north. The 509 garage protects any sight and sound from the west. And the and the south has got the berm and the distance there. And then Jason.
I stated that the we're following night sky protocol. So again, everything is meant to be light, any light on the proposed site for DOT in addition to the visual blocks that Director Travias talked about is that we're following dark sky protocol. So that should address concerns.
The next member of the public, Mr. Bruno, one of the first items he brought up was the displacement of festival activities such as the Highland Games. Based on my understanding, the Highland Games will be allowed to continue in that area of the fairgrounds, at least for the next coming year. The next concern was, I think, traffic across Beverly. So will there be any provision for traffic against across Beverly?
So yeah, Beverly is the paved the paved area into the fairground site. And again, no DOT traffic, none of our heavy vehicles, none of our passenger vehicles, none of the staff will be using Manchester as as access. So we will be coming and going from the 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 traffic signal and the new extension of the Northern Ring Road into the facility.
Even the southern emergency access to the yard still gains access to the ring road. No traffic is is set to go towards Manchester.
Another concern that Mr. Bruno expressed was the butterfly gardens and the orchard, whether they're going to be relocated.
Yeah, yeah, it's our it's our intent to work with the Fairgrounds Association to move the bees, relocate the 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 garden space and to either transplant or recreate the orchard. So that that final design is still under consideration with Fairgrounds Association.
Lastly, Mr. Bruno's last concerns sort of went together. The first was filtration at the wash stations and also whether we ever conducted an environmental impact study.
The wash building is all internal. All drains are going to go into the sanitary system. So it is not going to the storm system on site, therefore can go to proper treatment within the infrastructure. What was the second part?
Has there been an environmental impact study done?
Any asks are not required for this in this situation.
What we will say is that, as as was testified to earlier, this will be corrupted in the courts with all applicable ordinances, laws and regulations. Our next public commenters. Rick.
Barbieri.
Barbieri? Thank you. Essentially, he started out by asking what's the overall plan here for the county campus? And I I think that can be illustrated by what's happened over the last year or so. In October, we came up with the IGA with say we we zone this, the DuPage County Center governmental zoning district. This is the next step in that plan. And Steve, if there's anything.
And and as was stated earlier, we are beginning a a master plan of the the west campus now. And we'll have the future of that space mapped out. And I don't know if anyone else wants to testify as to.
Well, let me comment that with respect to the matter that is before this board, I don't think that the it may be of interest to all of us and certainly the gentleman who made the question. But the overall plan, the future plan for the complex is really not material to us to be considered in connection with this request. So and I don't know if the county wants to advise what the overall plan for the county complex is in connection with this hearing.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question, then. The next question had to do with whether this project would undo the approach on the fairgrounds.
So we're not so obviously the space is on the existing fairgrounds site. The mitigation efforts for the loss of green space is going to take up that three acres or so where the the parking is currently. So that will allow a use of those future events that's currently exist kind of in that northern quadrant of the the space. And so that's that's how we're addressing the the current events. And the Fair Association has been in coordination with us and plans to use their existing facilities for the immediate future to continue their operation.
And and I can say that I am the primary author of the current lease. It was amended in 2022, and this is consistent in terms of this.
Thank you.
The next question, and this was asked multiple times, is this the highest and best use? I'll I'll address that. Really, again, not the standard here today. The standard is whether this complies with the zoning ordinance as well as the county's ordinance, we believe it has. Our next and last public commenter, Debbie Debbie Hadelak, she was in favor. Again, these questions about what's going to happen to the fairgrounds. I think we've addressed that so far. The next question was, what about the berm along Manchester Road? I think she was looking for more specifics. We did testify as to what's planned for the berm. If there's anything in addition to what you testified already. The next question was regarding the pedestrian walkway and whether it's going to be closed.
It will not be enclosed. It'll be an open path that will connect along the the swale to the north end of the property and allow people access beyond the the secure perimeter of the facility. So people will be able to go from County Farm Road all the way in to the the school area beyond our our property.
It is also set to be 12 foot wide. So during large events, a lot of people, plenty of width, but also still allow for emergency vehicle access if necessary to gain access from east to west across that location.
Could you just show me where that is on this? Sort of my favorite.
So on Exhibit Three, if you look at. Page nine might be in the in the in the slide deck is another option. So to the north of the red dashed line at the property, which is the fence, you will see a gray path area that literally follows the entire fence along.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
It's outside of the wetlands, but still within the buffer application. It is meant to be it is meant to be not non-secured, so therefore it is accessible at all times.
All right, thank you.
And finally, the last two questions dealt with green space for parking lot, which has been addressed already as well as the festival activities on our own fairgrounds.
Let's be a trial lawyer because you did a great job of getting all those questions down.
I it's chicken scratch, telling you. Okay, so I guess in summation, the proposed use here will improve overall site operations. It will bring DUDAT employees together into one facility, centralizing their operations. It will allow the county to provide more efficient public services to the citizens of DuPage County. The proposed use, as we testified in the record, will show meets all of the requirements of both ordinances. And for those reasons, we ask that the application be accepted.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll conclude the hearing for the the public hearing for this evening on the matter of this petition. We will close the record in this case, so there will be no additional testimony. The decision of this board will be made exclusively on the record. Our recommendation meeting is set for 5:30 on September 4th. And that will be held in this room. It will be on Zoom and open to the public, but there will be no further public comment on the matter. And the next couple of items on the on the agenda, which I don't look any longer have in front of me, include the fact that there's no, I think I've already indicated, there's no public comment other than that, which is associated with this zoning petition. There's no old business, no new business, and so we're ready to adjourn for the evening back together on September 4th. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.